Good afternoon, or evening. We're going to call the order of the Gladstone Planning Commission, 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon, 97027. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Wentz?
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here.
Let's salute the flag. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, and in the name of the Constitution and justice for all. And tonight, on our agenda, we have the consent agenda, which we'll go over in a few minutes. On our regular agenda, we have a public hearing for exterior upgrades and improvements to, I believe it's Auto Town on 1-945-95-McLaughlin. And that's a public hearing. And another public hearing to extend a previous approval for Verizon Wireless. Let's go to the consent agenda. And we have item one, which is approval of the June 19, 2018, meeting minutes.
That also includes the monthly report.
And the second item is the monthly report. So, does anybody have changes, additions, or corrections to the meeting minutes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the May 15 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, and seconded by Commissioner Poole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. None opposed, motion passed. The monthly planning report, has everybody had a chance to review that?
Yeah.
Comments? I love that report. Thank you so much.
I was just going to say that. This is the best.
It's really, you know, I know I say that every time, but it really is appreciated. Thank you.
Glad to hear it. Thank you. Keep them coming.
Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing. And I'm going to open the public hearing on file Z-0237-18D. Exterior upgrades and building addition to an existing 13,480 square foot auto showroom to include exterior structural improvements, construction of a new 1,621 square foot vehicle reception area, and a new storefront. Proposed site improvements including landscaping, lighting, and trash enclosures. Property located at 1-9495 McGlaughlin Boulevard. This hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. The staff will present their report. Questions, if any, by the hearing body or staff. We will open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited. Actually, we're not going to put a limit on it tonight because there's not a whole lot of people from the public here, but within reason. The applicant, time will be given for the applicant first. Persons in favor of the application, persons opposed to the application, rebuttal from the applicants, and then we will close the public hearing. No other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. Final comments by staff. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission. Discussion and deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a date and time certain. Any party may request the continuance of this hearing, or may request the record remain open for seven days. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you will receive. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone, and when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In making a decision, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria and other criteria you believe apply to the decision. If you fail to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the commission, the applicant and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the City Council or the Land Use Board of Appeals. Unless the commission is making a recommendation to the City Council, the commission's decision will be the city's final decision in this matter unless appealed to the City Council. An appeal must be filed within 15 days in accordance with Chapter 17.92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Is that relevant?
The appeal piece?
Yeah, the 17.92. I think that should be current. The other city attorney gave me the script, so I'm trying it out. As opposed to the old one that we had thirty years ago.
So, give me the citation again.
It's, "An appeal must be filed within 15 days in accordance with Chapter 17.92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code."
Yes. But it's 15 days.
Okay. That's what it says, 15.
Yep.
Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action or damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I'd like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts. And we want to start down on the end. Ex parte contacts at all?
No.
None.
So, did you visit the site, either one of you?
I did not.
I walked around, but I didn't actually go physically and start looking on the lot.
Okay.
I drove by the lots today, and also was talking with our staff today regarding this application.
And I drive by the site every day, pretty much, and did today as well.
Yeah, I've had no ex parte contacts, but I've driven by and walked it, and went by again today, and just took another look.
I've driven by to take a look, but that's all.
I too have driven by and had a look, but not gone in.
Does anybody want to report any bias or conflicts of interest?
Actually, I will point out that I am a little concerned that the previous conditions of our approval that we gave before are not currently in compliance. I'm a little concerned about that. And that's specifically regarding the vehicles being parked on the landscaping.
Do you think that's going to cause you not to be able to make a fair decision?
I think we'll make a fair decision, but I think it's worth pointing out ahead of time that that is a bias, that we, you know, I have a concern about it already before we've heard from them.
So, I guess, for the record, Malachi, can you make a decision that's impartial even with that concern?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? Does any member of the, and I'm not going to say audience, I'll say public, does any member of the public wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Saying none. Does any member of the public wish to challenge any Planning Commission members' ability to participate? Saying none. Oh, I'm sorry, sir?
Just wondering if it would be an appropriate time to comment on Malachi's observation, and just to get a response to make sure that it is.
So, it would be appropriate now, if you want to just talk about whether you think he may be biased, but if you want to kind of get to the merits of what he's talking about, I would wait until your presentation. Does that make sense?
Can he ask that Malachi not participate, though? I think he has that right.
He can certainly ask. That's why, I mean, if it's a matter of questioning whether you want him to participate or not, that would be the appropriate time now.
I think we are questioning it a little bit, that he would be holding a previous design review that has not gone forward accountable towards this design review, which is a different application.
So, are you requesting that he not sit for the hearing? Okay, so, Malachi, that's up to you at this point. I mean, when bias issues are raised, really, the standard ultimately is whether you feel that despite any sort of feeling you have about, in this case, the parking issue, the car issue, would you still be able to render an impartial decision? My recommendation would be, since the applicant has raised a concern, you have a full, you know, panel here, that it might be cleanest for the record for you to step down, but that's your choice.
Yeah, I mean, if you're uncomfortable with it, I can step down. I'm not concerned with that. I will go, I guess, to that room over there?
No, you can just sit in the audience, but you just can't offer testimony, or you just...
Okay. So, let the record show that Malachi has voluntarily stepped down and will not participate as a member of the Planning Commission in this action. Does that sound right?
That sounds good.
So, I think, I don't know if I read this, but I'll read it again anyway. Does any member of the audience wish to, audience, of the public wish to challenge any Planning Commission members' ability to participate, which you did, and that member has stepped down voluntarily? And now, we are going to have the staff report.
Can we pull in the PowerPoint presentation up right now?
Can it be turned a little bit? Usually, it's turned a little bit.
Yeah.
It's like been squished flat.
So, this, our setup here is not...
Thank you.
Very good at all. In fact, I watched the City Council meeting tonight online, and one of the things I really was interested in, I couldn't hear because the microphone was not adjusted right. So, if anybody needs to move around to watch the PowerPoint presentation, just feel free to stand or move anywhere you'd like to be, and that's perfectly fine to do that. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, this is design review application number Z-0237-18-DR. So, the proposed project consists of exterior upgrades and a building addition to an existing Auto Town car sales office and service station center. The subject site is comprised of two separate tax lots, with the main business operations located on Tax Lot 4200, and then a parking overflow car lot located on the other tax lot.
Can you speak into the mic? A little bit more. There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Is that better?
Yes.
Thanks.
Interior tenant improvements were approved for the existing car showroom through county building permit BO-336118 in 2018. However, as far as planning staff are aware, no other building permits for any work associated with the subject design review that we're currently looking at have been issued. The subject site is located in between McGlaughlin Boulevard and River Road, and is not located within any Habitat Conservation Area, Overlake District, Water Quality Resource Area District, or Floodway or Floodplain. There were no other applicable overlays to the property that would require additional land use review or approval through other Gladstone Municipal Code provisions. It appears that the subject car sales business was first permitted by a design review land use approval in 1986, which records indicate involved the conversion of an existing restaurant on the site into the primary car sales or service operation center for, it was Thomas Volkswagen, I think. The conditions of approval on the original design review are attached as Exhibit 8 of The proposed design review was noticed, consistent with Gladstone Municipal Code Section 1794020, and no comments were received. The proposed project meets all of the applicable dimensional standards of the municipal code in terms of setbacks. It's consistent with the character of the area, which contains a mix of commercial and high-density residential on the other side of River Road. Although the proposed commercial car sales service business maintain that they have a historic non-conforming right to the existing, as they have explained in their application materials, 7.6 percent landscape coverage, they say exists on-site. Planning staff have reviewed aerial photographs dating back to 2005, where it appears the landscaping was more consistent with what we're assuming was approved in the original design review application, and has been on-site ever since. Specifically, it appears from aerial photographs that in 2008, there were six trees present on the property, which went to nine in 2007, and in 2005, there were 12. So, over time, more trees were cut down and landscaping removed. So, you can see, this is in 2001, and that's in 2003, so pretty similar. And then that's in 2009, so you can see the change that occurred in most of the landscaping being removed. The special conditions of the 1980s design review for the subject site reflect the original landscaping coverage, and indicate it was greater than what exists out there today. Specifically, the conditions of approval, attached as the exhibit again, reference existing maple trees along River Road that were to be maintained, and included requirements for 7.5 feet of landscaping strips of budding River Road, containing a three-to-four-foot-high shrub border to protect the residential uses across the street from night lights and car lights, and just general kind of commercial operations across the street. Based on the calculation of the landscaping area present on the property in 2005, when the most landscaping appears in aerial photographs, planning staff made an approximation that historically, it was reasonable to conclude at least approximately 7,000 square feet, or 8.6 percent of the site has been landscaped. So, their proposed landscaping plan right now includes 12 new trees, Western Flowering Dogwood, which is a native species listed on the Gladstone Native Species, Native Plant List, preferred kind of landscaping trees to include. So, they would be proposing to increase the landscaping area to 10,239 square feet, or 12.6 percent of the site. In our special condition, we recommended that the non-conforming landscaping coverage would be increased to 13.6 percent, which would result in 795 more square feet of landscaping than what they're proposing. And the reason for that is subsection 17.46.02010, Nonconforming Uses in Development. It requires any structural additions of 1,000 to 1,999 square feet, landscape at least an additional 5 percent of the developed site area, up to the minimum landscaping requirements for new development in the district. So, we added 5 percent onto the non-conforming historical 8.6 percent that we were estimating to get the recommended 13.6 percent of landscape coverage in special condition number eight.
So, that's an option? I mean, up to what the current requirements are? From this to this?
It means it wouldn't exceed it.
Okay, it wouldn't exceed the current requirement?
Right.
What would the current requirement be again?
15 percent. But the way that the code is written, it's, you can only add, require them to add an additional 5 percent above the non-conforming coverage.
And we're basing, if we do condition seven, we're going to base that on, so we're going to pass that it be, if we did condition seven, it'd be up to 13.6 percent, correct?
It would be condition number eight.
Eight?
And, right? And they would be required to revise their landscaping plan to include 13.6 percent, so they wouldn't be up to, they would have to include at least 13.6 percent of landscaping coverage.
In my note, or in my packet, it says condition seven.
Oh.
It's on page 3-13, about halfway down. 3-13.
Uh, that's a typo. So, that should say special condition number eight.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
It should say special condition number eight, is that what you said? Not seven? Okay.
Seven, special condition number seven is traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Good catch.
Additionally, due to the presence of residential homes across River Road from the subject site, staff are recommending the same condition, special condition number eight, site landscaping, to ensure that the applicants meet the intent of the original special conditions from the design review in the 80s, which required hedges or shrubs to be placed along River Road to buffer the commercial use of the property from the residential uses across the street, so it's three-to-four-foot-high shrubs, and we used identical language from the original condition of approval. As with the previous design review approved for the subject site, and most recently in 2017, planning staff are also recommending special condition number nine, to prohibit the parking of vehicles in the landscaping strips such as is currently occurring on-site. Other recommended special conditions of approval are shown in full in the staff report, and they're summarized here into categories. I'm sorry, that is a bit small to read. Let me show that there. So, you can see, special condition one, it was a bit unclear from the plans whether or not there would be any metal siding visible. We included that condition just in case there was any metal siding at any point in the construction that was visible, that it be screened with landscaping or visually appropriate building material. Special condition number four will require the buildings to incorporate energy-efficient design in the final plans. They've submitted a landscaping, or I'm sorry, a lighting plan that appears to be compliant with what the code requires. However, a final lighting plan will be required to be submitted. Landscaping, we've mostly gone over, and I'm sorry, that seems like there's that typo that's continuing, that should say special condition number eight. Will require submission of a landscaping plan that meets code requirements prior to the issue of any building permits, to include that 13.6 percent of landscaping coverage. Circulation and parking, from their submitted plan, they do meet the parking requirements per the code. However, it was unclear where exactly the parking for the employees and the patrons would be designated, if there were, how they were moving cars around to show, and then accommodate the patrons and employees. So, we recommended the special condition, so on the final parking plan, it's clearly marked where that parking will occur. Let's see, and then, we didn't receive any comments back from Mike Funk. It's our understanding he has looked at it and has concerns and questions, but he didn't submit comments. So, just in case, we recommend including that special condition number 13, so that he can weigh in prior to the issuance of any building permits about circulation and access for fire safety. So, this is our staff recommendation that you approve the design review Z-0237-18-DR with the recommended conditions pursuant to staff recommendation.
And then, sorry, back to the condition number nine that we talked about a minute ago. We already have, we were going to make that, no, that was eight.
Sorry.
Eight became seven, I believe.
So, condition nine is still going to be signage, or is that going to be?
So, the conditions are correctly referenced everywhere else, it's just that, on page, I think in your packet, it's number, it's 3-13, you said.
Okay.
It should say special condition number eight there, instead of special condition number seven.
Okay.
Everywhere else, it's...
All right, thank you. Sorry.
None of them.
Do you have any questions right now, before we start the applicant?
I'd like to hear from Mike Funk if he has any concerns or issues.
Mike Funk, Fire Marshal for the City of Gladstone. My biggest concern that the Fire Department always has is accessibility around the building. I have personal opinion about landscaping, but that is not read out in fire code, so I'll withhold those comments. I think that there's already enough concern about that. But it does kind of allude to the accessibility issue. We have so many cars jammed in the accessway around the building. There was not a lot of room to get my car driving through about 20 minutes ago, let alone a fire vehicle. A fire vehicle cannot make access around. So, I thank Melissa very much for making sure that the Fire Department, because I didn't get my comments in, making sure that one of the conditions of approval is all Fire Department requirements will be met. It's going to be essential, and there's going to have to be enforcement. We're going to need to have lines painted, marked as no, "Fire lane, no parking." We have got some auto dealerships in town that do a fair job, some that do poor job, and some that do great job. I won't tell you at all who does what, that wouldn't be fair, but it is a continuous issue for the Fire Department as we deal with accessibility around the buildings. In the present state, I understand that they are construction, with very big construction trailers in front of it right now, but I have a real concern about the accessibility around the building, and I just encourage the Planning Commission to protect all of our citizens' interests by making sure that that is a condition of approval, that these things are met, and, you know, notice, or the, you know, the friendly nudge to the applicant that it is something that we are looking at, so that they know ahead of time. By the time that they're ready for final approval, they can have everything in line because they won't get a final approval from the Fire Department until that is addressed.
Is there an example that you think fits the criteria, that if any of us wanted to go and look at, so that we know what the best way is to mark for accessibility of any of the lots that are on McGlaughlin?
Well, let me give you two. One of them, we've had some problems, some issues with, the Kia dealership up the street. Not saying that that's the problem or not the problem, but if you drive through the Kia dealership, there's one way in and one way out, and think about driving a 35-foot-long fire engine opposed to your 17-foot-long Subaru, or whatever it is. And then, the width of our fire engines, and the turning radius of our fire engines. There's very specific things in fire codes that address those. Let me just jump to the other side of the road, and I think it's our newest dealership, the Honda dealership. They once had a very big lot, that lot has been cut in half, but if you look at perimeters around the building, both at the Honda lot, and perimeters around the building of the Kia lot, I think you'll see examples of signage, of width, that is required, some of those things. Some of them are better than the others, and again, it's just not appropriate for me to say, "This one is good, and this one needs work, and this one's horrible." But I think there is two lots there that give an example. And if you just go in the mind of a 20-foot-wide road, you know, wherever we go, with room for us to turn within there, to get around these buildings, regardless of which dealership it is.
So, the Town and Country Honda has made the width of your lanes ample enough for you to do and move freely if there was a fire? Is that correct?
Let me answer it this way. The Kia dealership and the Town and Country Honda, as it went through this process, both met fire code at the time that they put that in.
Okay.
Now, if dealerships have choose to infringe upon that space after they're permitted and able to occupy...
Gotcha.
That's part of the concern that I have, and I need that backing from the Planning Commission that supports the ability for us to have that. This is not unique to this applicant. You know, I don't mean or intend to point fingers at this applicant, but this is my best process to get that enforcement ability, and that's why I come before you tonight.
So, would adding the striping be appropriate? So would, um, adding the striping be appropriate for a condition for you? Would that satisfy some of your, because the Planning Commission can't enforce codes?
Understood, yes.
Or discriminate because we know that somebody's violating the code? When we look at this application, we have to look at the merits of the application, correct?
I, that's correct. I think, I think, and I don't wanna put words into Mike's mouth, but there's a proposed condition that he just is urging you to impose, which I think would resolve, would allow him to resolve his concern.
So condition, special condition thirteen, as we have it now, is prior to issuance of any building permits, applicant shall receive approval in writing from the Gladstone Fire Department indicating all requirements from that agency have been satisfied. And then I was thinking, um, add striping to be approved by Fire Marshal or something.
We'll probably handle that at the Building Department.
Okay.
Uh, section of it, 'cause, 'cause they, uh, they have me, and that's who I sign off to. I sign off to Clackamas County Building Department. I'm one of their checkmarks, and, uh, just as long as the applicant and the Building Department know upfront, you know, who I, I am in touch with, as long as they, I just, fairness to our applicant is, as much as anything, was, was the reason for my, my, my talk here tonight.
You're good.
Melissa protects me with what she does in the Building Department. Uh, as we work together, we make sure the accessibility is met.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't the real issue that in the end, they're gonna meet the requirement, we're not gonna have cars parked out in the island, and some of the things that you saw today will be gone because, uh, construction is intended to resolve that. So, um, someone's got a lot of contracting experience, uh, and you know, when they're in construction, you're gonna have FedEx, you're gonna have dump, people are gonna pull up there, they're gonna park illegally.
Or they can.
So how we manage the construction, which isn't our job here tonight, but how that gets managed and making sure that we're real adamant about how it's enforced and, and what the end result is, is really our job, isn't it?
If, if we can get them to.
We just really need to be adamant about, when we get to the end of line and they want final occupancy, they've gotta meet everything now and in the future.
That, that includes red fire lane, no parking signs, those kinda things, as long as we protect those particular things.
I think we have.
Then it gives me the authority for enforcement through fire code lately.
And it's all in our code. Uh, you know, if you saw any special conditions that you wanna add or anything, we could do that. Um.
I'm not looking for any special conditions.
Okay.
Again, it was as much of awareness to, to you guys and to the applicant of my concern.
Okay.
Early enough in the process so that they can plan on it. I think that's the only fair way.
Appreciate that.
To approach our, our applicant.
And the beauty of it is, we do have code enforcement nowadays.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions for me?
I wonder, is it not typical to see a, a fire line, fire lane plan in the drawings?
Um.
You normally see that with the calculations of the swings?
I, I don't know that it's always there, but I see it in a lot of them.
I'm used to seeing it, so, I mean, when I look through these drawings.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that I see that are missing, but, uh, so, yeah, I just, I figured that would be something that they would have to present.
I, I, I don't think that that's been an emphasis explained to them that we would like to see that. I have not done that to this point.
So Melissa, what do you think about that? Was, were the drawings adequate for the traffic, for the parking and ingress and egress? Do you think that was fine?
They were adequate to show that they met the parking standards and access, um, but in terms of fire requirements, that's not really called out, um, specifically in Title Seventeen and zoning and land use. So that's why we put that condition in there, to make sure that the project's consistent with the rest of the municipal code and the Fire Department's requirements.
So are you satisfied, Mike, that, uh, just so that we have that as a condition of approval, just for the building permits that you're signing off on everything?
Yes, sir, I am. I think Melissa has covered me that very well.
Okay.
Um, but I think when you see blanket statements like that, I think, uh, the Planning Commission would, would, would like the explanation of why sometimes, and, and again, that's why I have taken your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good, Mike.
Anything else before the applicant?
I don't have any other questions. Do you have any more?
Anything on the staff report that needs to be clarified? Okay, now, the applicant may now present testimony and arguments. Um, when you come forward, can you please, uh, state your name and address for the record and, uh, use a microphone? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Rahima Bossi. My business address is two two five Southwest First Avenue in Portland, Oregon, nine seven two zero four. Thank you, everyone, staff. Mike, thank you as well for your testimony. Um, so I was hoping we could go over a couple of these conditions of approval and maybe discuss them a little further. Uh, I have a few concerns with, with the conditions as they've been, uh, established. Uh, specifically, would like to tackle the landscaping one, if I may, in the beginning. Um, part of it is, I'd like to have a better understanding of how staff measured the landscaping area, because I did the landscaping areas myself, and if you include the planter beds that go into Gloucester as well as River Road, then you would hit the eight thousand square foot number they are discussing as previously existing, but the code specifically says that you must exclude those when you're doing your area analysis. You're only allowed to include the pa- planter beds that are in the right of way along McLaughlin, and so I'm a bit confused about how you guys got your areas, because we did a fairly extensive analysis of these, and I can pull up the blue beam if you'd like to see on my laptop. I just did it again to show you that we would gla- easily hit more than actually thirteen percent if you included those areas.
All right, I'm going back to find the right photo so we can see. If we can use the landscaping plan. Um, so in the calculations we did, there was a full planter behind, um, the existing, the main building there, um, and so we approximated, we're using aerial photographs to look at the area of landscaping as historically occupied the space. So we just measured out and made sure it was consistent with that seven and a half foot requirement from the previous design review.
Okay.
Um, along River Road, and I know that the code might be a little different now, but that's what the previous design review required, so we included that in the measurements, which might be the discrepancy there.
Okay. So would we be allowed to include the areas of landscaping that exist that are beyond the property line then at this point in our area calculations? Because that's how you're estimating those areas. Those are currently on the other side of the property line.
Well, in the, and that might be a good, something that, to clarify, um, but in the original design review, it was required that those areas were, um, I think, deeded to the city, so that was a question, uh, maybe that would be good to figure out, is who owns that?
Sure.
It seems like right now that was never granted to the city from the tax map, so it seems like that's all still on your property and should be part of, or the applicant's property and should be part of the calculations.
Okay, so if we included those, just for reference, so I just, I looked it up, did it in blue beam again while we were sitting here, so planter bed specifically, actually, could you go to, can you zoom in at all, or, well, the, planter bed number five is the middle one there along Gloucester. Planner bed number six is the one to the bottom left there, whereas it goes in to tie into River Road. So not including anything beyond the property line is how we got the numbers that are in our table that we submitted for our areas. If you add in those areas, we will be well above the thirteen point six percent with our proposal, as it currently is.
Okay.
So if we are allowed to include those, then I think that this is fine. We're willing to accept the, the condition of approval, but the code says you're not supposed to include those, and so that's where I'm a little concerned about, and we were operating under direction from someone at, uh, City of Gladstone, Clackamas County about how to measure this when we went through this process. So I just wanna make sure we're on the same page about it so that we can meet the requirement correctly.
Right, and I think it's a bit confusing because we're dealing with the old, what the old design review application required and what's currently out there. Um, so I mean, maybe we can, you're saying that you're currently, as landscaping coverage is on the site right now, you're meeting that thirteen, um, point six percent if you count the city right of way landscaping area?
Correct. So if we could amend the proposed condition or the condition of approval to allow us to include those areas, then I, I think that we're willing to accept that condition of approval as it's written.
And, I mean, we can leave that up to Planning Commission discussion. The original design review did say seven and a half foot, um, wide with that area, along River Road with that area to be deeded to the city, which it sounds like it was, and, but it's.
Our survey shows, our survey did a estimate on the boundary cer- line. It didn't have a, it's not an actual boundary survey, but we have it pretty clearly identified on our doc- documents from the surveyor about where we believe the property line to be.
Okay. So certainly, you can leave that up to Planning Commission to discuss.
So it's, just to clarify, so it's showing that part as right of way, then?
Currently, yes.
Well, that would suggest that it was dedicated.
But your, but your, the applicant would be maintaining it in perpetuity and.
Correct.
Using it as landscaping area.
Right, and, and through previous discussions over the phone with, with representatives of the county, we agreed and understood that there were trees that were removed that we would have to replace. Um, do you wanna clarify that it was a previous owner of this property that did all of that tree removal and changes to landscaping, it's not the current property owner that did any of that work? So they were unaware, actually, at the time when they purchased and acquired the property, that that even had occurred.
So on condition number eight, how would we change that to reflect if the Planning Commission decides they want to do that?
You could say, um, to include the landscaping areas, um, a lot, is it just River Road front of?
I think it's River Road and Gloucester.
Uh, the landscaping areas abutting, uh, River Road and Gloucester and city public right of way. Um, we may want to add in somewhere, uh, that it's the applicant's responsibility to maintain that landscaping in perpetuity, um, in the, in the right of way, in specifically in the city right of way, because we have it generally for the site, but if it's on, if it's in city right of way, then we probably wanna specify that that's their responsibility.
For those areas, obviously, it wouldn't be the entire length.
So, yeah, so if you, would you be okay with, if you wanna include that, that you maintain it?
Yes.
I mean, otherwise, you know, you probably would have to take some more landscaping out of your area if you were gonna.
Sure.
Need the requirement, but if you would agree to, if we change that condition, if we did agree to include that, then you'd be okay with doing maintenance on that?
I believe that'd be more than acceptable to auto dealership, and it's in their benefit to maintain that property, so I think I would say that that's agreeable.
Sir, if you wanna come up and state your name and address for the record, you can address the Planning Commission.
Name and address.
My name is Sammy Mohammed. My address is one one two five Northwest Twelfth Avenue, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two zero nine. Just so you know, we are already maintaining it right now. The city's not maintaining it. I mean, the city's not doing anything to it. We've been doing it for the last eight years, and, and we're paying almost fifteen hundred bucks a month to maintain that whole area, so.
Okay.
Just so I can be clear.
So you have no problem with continuing to do that then?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I think that, do you wanna, can we go into more conditions? We think we've understood the landscaping one, or?
Anybody wanna ask anymore about the landscape?
I would just say we should make real careful or real clear when, in our final language, which I know we will, that everything we've agreed to is exactly as we just said.
Yeah, we'll, we can get to that.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So go ahead and move on.
Perfect. So, uh, I just wanted to get some clarity also on, uh, special condition number one, which was related to landscape screening. So it says here, by acceptance of this permit, the applicant agrees to adequately screen any metal siding proposed on the exterior of any buildings on the subject site. Um, and I was hoping I could get a little more clarity on that. So the, the entirety of the exterior facade, like where the soffit line is, is using a, a high quality metal siding. It's an ACM panel. That qualifies and counts as a metal siding. Do I need to be screening that too?
Is it painted?
So, no, it comes out, it's a, it's an actual extruded metal that comes out already with the color on it.
Okay, which.
Like you would see on most dealerships, actually.
Which to my mind, the high quality color is, uh, comparable to being painted.
Well, what is the purpose of that? To keep the, the shine out? Is that the purpose for, for why they say it's gotta be covered or painted?
It, it's a requirement in the, in the code.
Reflective.
In Title Seventeen, that you can't use metal siding.
And in the day, you had a lot of galvanized metal down there, and, and it was bright, and it got hot, and it didn't look very pretty.
So the landscaping plant materials, paint, or other appropriate visually unobtrusive materials, so.
Right.
As the other commissioners have pointed out, if you painted it with the proper.
That would qualify it?
It would seem to me.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I understood that one, 'cause it was a little obscure to me when I saw that. Uh, and then also was hoping to get some clarity on what the, what the meaning of energy efficient design is. We are, uh, following under the mechanical code to, to provide energy conservation to the maximum of allowable, but it is an existing building that's being remodeled and not a new construction, so we're not subject to bringing it to complete exi- uh, new code, but we are doing our best to bring it to, into compliance the max we can. So I don't know what this condition actually means.
So then the new building that's proposed would need to meet the design, uh, review requirements and the building and siding design requirements, so this is directly from the code.
Okay.
It's energy efficient design.
So this is just for, really, it's for that sixteen hundred square feet.
Right.
Addition that we're doing?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And, let's see. Then could, I'd actually like to just make sure that I understood the Fire Department approval one, the condition related to that. So are we putting a condition on the, of approval on the design review that I get a letter from the Fire Department before we go in for building permits, or am I just going through the building permit process and going through the code review with fire plan review that would occur to make sure we're meeting all the fire requirements?
Um, if we do add special condition thirteen, you can, do you want me to read it, or you, it'd be just as it says. So you would have to, prior to issuing of any building permits, receive approval in writing from the Gladstone Fire Department indicating all requirements from that agency have been satisfied. So that you could not get a building permit unless the Fire Marshal said that he's satisfied.
But we can submit for building permit, so it's not like I'm having to do two teams of paperwork. I'm really just going in for a building permit. They're gonna do their review, and we'll have to comply regardless, right?
Right.
Just making sure I understood that. Okay.
Planning coordinates actively with Fire Department when we're reviewing, you know, the building permits, 'cause the planning has to sign off too, so we coordinate as a group.
Okay.
To sign off together, but that's all during the building permit review process, when you're planned and you're building permit applications in with the county.
Got it. Okay. Just making sure I understood that one. All right. And, uh, I just would like to make a comment about the display of vehicles, 'cause I, I don't think that they have any disagreement with that condition of approval. I wanna make sure it's clear that part of why there's so much out there right now is that we, we have an interior construction permit issued for doing the main part of the showroom already, so we're already in that process, which is why there's trailers out there.
Okay.
That's why there's so many vehicles in the way, in the place. Um, they do, prior to starting construction, I can, I can personally say that the twenty foot wa- right of way or, uh, vehicle movement strips always existed. They were never scattered with vehicles or anything like that at that time. Um, and the, I did ask the, the property owners about whether they had received any direct communication from anyone at the city about having parked vehicles on the landscaping. It sounds like the last time they heard, had communication from the city directly was more than a couple of years ago, with a letter saying to please fix a place where tires had been noticed in the landscaping. Um, they were not at the last design review meeting that was, and it was a different design professional that was involved in that. It does not appear that that condition was ever communicated to the property owner, so.
That was a, a condition of approval on the last design review, the display of vehicles was strictly prohibited in the right of way or the parking. The applicant, when the applicant submits us, regardless of if I did the design for him or you did, is responsible to know what's on it.
Sure.
And there's been vehicles parked on that landscaping since I can remember, so it's not anything new.
I, I understand what you're saying. Um, my, my statement is just that there was, just so everybody's aware, that my, my understanding from what they've informed me is that they were not informed by the city except for once, and they weren't aware that that was the condition of approval at the last design review.
Well, it should've been. They should've known because they submitted the application.
Understood. It was an architect that handled the entire process for them.
Whose name was on it?
Uh, that I'm uncertain of, actually.
It was Autotown. That's whose name was on the application. That was only a year
And I can also tell you that there's a whole new emphasis on code enforcement in City of Gladstone in the last couple of years, so things that have been let go probably are not gonna be let go with the frequency that they have today, especially things that are in, uh, highly visible areas, so.
Sure. Again, my point is not a, a defense against actions that have happened. They're accepting the condition of approval as it's written. I just wanna make sure I commented on it, uh, from my understanding that's coming from you.
I just wanted to explain to you what, what the responsibilities are if you submit an application. That's all.
Yep, and on our application, there's no provision showing that you should be parking vehicles on any of that strip. We've shown, identified parking, uh, locations, stalls and striping on that. Um, we don't show any vehicles parked in it, uh, for a reason. It's not allowed by code.
Good.
I think that's all of them. Uh, I wasn't sure about number twenty, the, uh, the developer satisfy ODOT requirements and what that means exactly here. We have existing openings, so.
Is that because of ninety-nines, the state highways, or?
So on the previous design review, ODOT submitted comments, and we incorporated those comments into the design review, but they weren't included in the file. those comments into the design review, but they weren't included in the file and they weren't attached as an exhibit or referenced in detail. ODOT did not comment this time, so just in case they have concerns or comments and we're meeting their requirements, we included this condition.
So should I be reaching out to ODOT directly to try to find out if they have anything?
I would recommend that.
Because my understanding is they wouldn't if you are not changing your curb line typically, but, okay. So I guess I will reach out to ODOT to make sure, and what happens if ODOT does come up with something at that point, does it impact the design review decisions that are made?
We didn't put a prior to building permit issuance, you have to figure this out, it's just to respect, they have different requirements and it's your responsibility to meet them.
Okay, got it. I think I understand that one, great, thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, does anybody, any member of the public wish to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Does any member of the public wish to speak against the application? Seeing none. Does any member of the public wish to provide neutral testimony? No one? Does applicant wish to provide rebuttal? If someone did testify, then this would be your opportunity. Does the staff have anything they wish to add or wish to recap?
No, I think we covered everything, but I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Does any member of the commission have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point? If there are no further questions, then I will close the public hearing portion.
I have a question, Chairman.
Good.
And I'd like to ask our fire, Mike Funk, adding fire lane striping is a condition of approval. I see that as a benefit for you as much as it is for the city of Gladstone, you have multimillion dollars in inventory there, and the idea that a fire could be running through there with difficult access, and I know a little bit about the car business, cars come and go all day long, guys got to put something here because they got to get over here, and they may, while you may have every intent of having it kept clear and open, the reality is that doesn't always work that way. And I think, you know, you go to a lot of public places, there's red curbs, no parking fire lane, and it just seems to me that that's one more hedge against a potential problem, if there, hopefully it never is, but if there was a disaster that involved your business or next to your business, that adequate fire access just seems critical to me.
I would agree that adequate fire access is critical.
And well-marked fire access, like any other parking facility.
Yeah, I believe that, Mike Funk, fire marshal, I believe that it will be addressed through the building department and in that section, it doesn't hurt to throw something in, because I was pretty adamant about how important that was, and again, I think that's just us protecting the citizens that we're representing. I believe it is covered through the building code, but it does not hurt to, and the applicant I don't think would disagree that they want to protect their building as well, yeah.
Not only that, it's very close to residential, there's apartments there, there's the mobile home park, you know, right across the street, so, yeah.
Having it there is very, very important as that reminder, and it has to stay painted clearly and marked clearly. There's rules for the height of signs and the color and size of signs, it gets really particular in that, because if somebody has to tow that away, or, which will be the owner's responsibility, or if somebody has to cite, which would be my responsibility, I don't want to cite this dealership, that's nice. I want them to sell cars and stay in Gladstone for as long as they want, so anything that we do upfront, I think is just a bonus.
So, if I may, I just want to make sure we also hedge against, you know, a lot of the particulars of the building code, the fire code, the plumbing code, you can go through all sorts of specialty codes, are completely outside of your purview, and for good reason, you're looking at this at a little bit of a higher level than that, and as the process goes down, you get to the building permit stage and a lot of those really more technical codes come in, so I think it's perfectly fine to have a condition that talks about striping, I would just offer two things, one, I wouldn't want to see the planning commission in a situation where it's trying to figure out where does that striping go on the site, I mean, that's something that...
His job.
Exactly. And so in that vein, I would, if you want to have a condition that addresses that, I would say something that almost becomes a truism, but it maybe just adds some weight to the importance for Mike, and that is, you know, stripe in accordance with, you know, relevant fire code criteria, and that way it's just, you know, emphasize that that's supposed to happen, I think it will regardless, but I just don't want to see the planning, it's not even just this application, it's others, where you're getting into a situation where you're trying to figure out where fire striping should go on a property.
Yeah, I think, you know, Mike said earlier that he thought he was fine with, we wouldn't have to add that as a condition, so we can discuss that when we get to the...
Sounds like that'll be something he'll specify or quote as the code once it goes through the final review.
Yeah, in a way it's written, it says that the applicant shall receive approval in writing from Gladstone Fire Department indicating all requirements from that agency have been satisfied, so I don't see, I think what you're saying is it's not, we don't have to deal with him making his...
It's going to happen regardless.
Exactly.
Yeah, but if it's a matter of emphasis, that's fine, I think there's sometimes some fair reason for that, I just wanted to be sure that it was clear that it's not your role and it shouldn't be, not because you're, you know, you're way out of your lane, it's that it's a pretty specialized thing and we don't have the capability to figure out where those...
You don't want to get too far into the weeds on a lot of this stuff too, because if it is appealed, then we have to go through every bit of this, so, you know, if we can stay concise, I think we're better off.
Well, we don't have to say anything about the striping, because that would be up to the fire department to make their decision.
The parking, the reason we said anything about the parking is because it's been an ongoing issue that needs to be, and apparently the applicant wasn't aware that the parking violations were occurring in the landscaping.
Well, and actually I do have a question about the landscaping, because saying about what was deeded and what isn't, isn't the property anymore, do you mean that the swell between the road and the sidewalk, or the green area that's on the side of the sidewalk next to the building?
Yeah, so when we did our analysis, we used the portion of green that is from the, that we identified as the property, towards the building only in our calculations. The calculation that I understand that were done by the planning commission included the entire green space, the swab, which means it's including the sidewalk, the public side of the property.
The public side, you're saying the piece of green that's on the side between the sidewalk and the road? Okay, yeah, which is, pardon? Which is always, always a responsibility of whoever owns the land, whether it's a house or a business building.
All right, so the public hearing is still open, but if we're going to discuss, let's discuss, and then, you want to close the public hearing?
Would you like a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, there, you know, right now, we're going to talk to staff and see if we have any things to clarify, if the applicant, you know, wanted to testify, he could have, so at this point, we're at the point of let's close the public hearing or not, and then we'll deliberate. Are we at that point? So, does anyone wish to make a motion to close the public hearing? If no further questions, I will close the public hearing testimony and the public will, there will be no more questions of the applicant at that point, unless we reopen the public hearing.
Chairman Roletta, I move that we close the public hearing on application number
I second.
Moved by Commissioner Pat Smith and seconded by Commissioner Alex Smith, and the public hearing is now closed. Okay.
I'm sorry, I believe I stepped in as our attorney.
No, not at all, I sort of stepped in, you're great, you guys are fine.
So the public hearing's closed and now we're on to deliberation, so let's deliberate.
I'm still confused and not completely clear regarding the landscaping. How much, you know, based on what they said, how much will it reduce what you have in the proposal from staff?
So I was calculating based off of the entire existing landscaped area, and they're saying that it appears the nineteen eighty-six conditions of the design review were met in that they deeded some of that landscaping area to the city, but they continue to maintain it, so if you look, let me see, I can read it. Says dedicate to city of Gladstone a strip of land for sidewalk purposes adjacent to River Road on the entire westernly edge of the site, in addition, the applicant shall construct a standard sidewalk adjacent to the curb at the minimum width acceptable to public works director for the purpose of preserving existing large maple trees.
And that sidewalk is there now, and the planning strip is there, so what the question is, do we want to include that into the calculation for the requirement or not? And if we don't include that, then there was some question about how much more additional landscape they would be required to do.
Right.
If they're...
And those trees that were there are now gone.
Well, they're all gone, what existing maple tree?
Well, there's, there's a planning strip there, there's no trees, because they were cut down apparently by the previous owner of the property, or the dealership, one of the two. And, so the question is, and they've agreed that they would maintain that.
And replant it, so they're replanting it with more trees, twelve new trees, and then we would be also requiring that they use three to four-foot shrubs along that same area.
So with that, with that calc, excuse me, with that calculation, what percentage are they providing?
That's what I want to know, thank you, Les.
That was a little gray, because, I mean, we have to be real here at some point and say, look at fourteen, do we approve it, given that right now, today, they're at seven and we're trying to go the other direction, so I just want to be clear about, I'm not questioning where we're heading, but...
So some of the existing landscaping area that they're, not existing, that they're proposing, the existing, the proposed landscape area is actually city-owned property, city right-of-way.
Just like my parking strip.
The code says you don't count that in the landscape coverage calculation, so they weren't including that in their proposed ten thousand two hundred thirty-nine square feet or twelve point six-two percent of the site. But if we allow them to include that, in this case, because that was the original requirement of the design review for landscaping coverage and that they're non-conforming landscaping status, then they would be meeting the thirteen point six percent.
So no, so nothing's going to be taken away? With that, it's not like the little strips are going to be made smaller on the other side?
No, you would be adding, and I have it written out in the landscaping section.
Well, it's not like we're moving a sidewalk.
No.
Yeah, no, I'm saying like on this side, that that gets made smaller, because now they're cutting that strip, that's the only thing that I'd be concerned about.
They couldn't afford to, I think without that, they'd have to increase more landscape, if we let them use that, then they're going to meet the requirement, and they wouldn't have enough, there wouldn't be abundance of it where they could reduce any other area, because that's basically what we are...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if that gets included, as long as they're not cutting it off on the, on the side where they have their parking lot, that's all.
They were still adding anyway.
Yeah, so they're adding, as existing right now, based on the applicant's information and calculations, there's six thousand one hundred eighty-eight square feet of landscaping, their proposed landscaping plan, not including the landscaping in public right-of-way, is ten thousand two hundred thirty-nine square feet, so even without including the public right-of-way landscaping, you still have a great increase in your landscaped areas on the site.
Okay.
And diversity, not just lawn or low-lined grass and grass and trees.
Part of landscaping, the way I look at it, isn't just for appearance, obviously, it's for stormwater, we've got stormwater problems, they're getting worse every day, and that's no reason to deny what you're doing, but you're real close to the river there, and so when I look at landscaping, I look at a place for water to go, and hopefully a shady parking spot, if I happen to be the lucky one to get it.
I'd love to see bio swells everywhere, because of our stormwater issue.
So, are we...
I'm clear now on the landscaping.
Okay, so do you want to change that condition? To include the landscape area on River Road? That's going to be the question, I'm good with it.
I'm fine.
Including that landscape strip on River Road?
I think it was on River Road and Gladstone.
Gladstone, yeah.
So that, to me, is fine, however the rest of you feel.
I agree.
I agree, if it's like written like you said about being maintained and adding the trees.
A condition of approval that they'll maintain it in perpetuity.
Pretty much.
And I would approve that, that'd be fine.
So condition number eight is going to be to include that landscape strip. You want to go by, to start out with all the conditions, or do you want to do the special ones? The standard conditions are pretty standard, I don't think we need to discuss those. Condition number one, the landscape screening, there was some question about that, that they use appropriate paint and so forth, I think that's fine.
That's an extruded metal siding with pigment embedded in it as a color.
So it's not shiny?
It's not shiny, it's, it seems fine.
And the paint won't be peeling off of it?
Yeah, it sounds better.
Not worth paying for it.
Mechanical equipment, any new mechanical equipment, that's pretty standard. Lighting, I'm good with, you know, this special condition number three.
Didn't you say they were, they already submitted a lighting, okay.
Lighting plan that was submitted on additional correspondence, I believe it's in that.
Yeah, it's this one right here.
And I do have a concern about lighting, that's another ongoing issue in Gladstone. We're putting in more bright LED lights, that's a commercial area, I know there's a lot of things that can be done with shrouding, but if we end up with light somehow creeping across that street, again, maybe I'm getting in the weeds here, but it's real important that the lighting meet the standards that it's advertised to meet.
Did you look at that lighting plan?
Yeah.
Because you're not talking to them, because the public hearing's closed, so you're probably talking to them.
Actually, I should be talking to you.
Okay.
Correct, correct, yes, I should voice it.
So did you look at the lighting plan?
I did look at the plan, and again, my concern is only that the best world, when it's your bedroom window, when it's your front yard, when it's all done...
But do you think it looks right?
We run into situations where the lighting plan is approved, but there's a real world out there and sometimes there's some spillover.
Yeah, I think Autotown's got that problem, or not Autotown, T-Bone, Car Planet, they have to fix some of that, so I think that we're doing a better job of finding those issues as they come up, because I know, aren't they working on that lighting over there, Car Planet's?
It's my understanding Sean's working on it, it wasn't, there wasn't a design review, you know, hook where we kind of have a land use, it's more of a general municipal mode.
I think in the conditions of their, we did have the dark skies lighting in their conditions, if I remember, right?
And drill has a...
Well, I was just wondering.
I can follow up with Sean on that separately, he's contacted me about three or four lighting ones, so I may be mixing them up, but I can follow up and update you guys on that next one.
Can I make it clear, I didn't see anything specific, I've been around a lot of these plans, but I'm not an engineer and I'm not objecting anything, I'm just raising the issue, because we don't want something down the road or making changes or confusion that costs everybody time and money and unnecessary pain.
So are you good with the condition for lighting?
Commissioner Langston has a question.
Yeah, I was just, is it typical that, like on the illumination chart, that it only shows like the intended area that they want to light, not like the light that's, you know, traveling beyond their, their property?
Are you, did you ask, is it typical that they...
So you see the calculations, the illuminations in the parking lot, but it doesn't show you like in the, on River Road or anything?
So we had concerns about that too, so we asked them to submit a revised lighting plan, I don't know if that's what you're looking at, but on there, they added a statement that says all luminaires are full cut-off luminaires to aim light down at the ground and all exterior lights will be installed at twenty-foot mounting height.
Okay.
So that's intended, that's on their revised lighting plan, the middle, it's intended to address overspill, lighting overspill, and then we included the dark skies compliant lighting for the final lighting plan to address that in an additional manner.
That satisfy your questions? Anybody else have questions about lighting? Condition, we're just going to the special conditions, number four, we already talked about that, you know, they're a new building, they're going to, you know, go to today's standards for... going to, you know, go to today's standards for, you know, try to make it as energy efficient as possible. Without going through the, you know, plans and see how many nuts and bolts they put on their beams and stuff like that, I think the intent is understood by me, anyway. Does anybody have any questions about that? Crash, that's pretty standard. It's just, you know, a special condition that everybody needs to read that. Anybody have anything to add about this special condition five? Non-residential construction, special conditions six, comments, traffic path, that's got that thousand trips a day on there. Do you think that's right?
Not sure. The only question I'd have, I can't ask them, I'll ask you, but I'm wondering about any potential street interruption or street closure during construction, if you're on Gloucester or River Road.
The plans don't show like the demolition plan and...
Other than trucks coming and going, the normal construction, but I'm wondering about perhaps if they had to block off the street for a day.
Yeah, I don't know that that would be part of our scope, anyway.
Disregard.
But yeah, it's a good question. It'd be something for the, to think about. They'd have to get a permit to close the street, anyway, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
As far as I know.
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
If they were going to close Gloucester or River Road, they'd have to have a permit to do that.
Yeah, they would have to talk to Jim and authorization.
Any of that stuff would be done.
I forget what he calls it.
Well, and this is just about what the daily trips are going to be in the future, so it's...
The end result.
Mm-hmm. The end result.
So if we think it's over a thousand, then we need to say something about that now.
Okay.
Anybody?
No.
Site landscaping, condition number eight, so that's where we're going to add the part about the planting strip. Signage, did anybody see anything in signage that we need to look at? I kind of looked at the signage, but I didn't go through all the technical things about the sizes and of the signs and stuff. It's pretty, our code is pretty clear. When McDonald's, for instance, did their application, they wanted some non-standard sizes for their signage, and we said no at that time. That was quite a few years ago now, for McDonald's. So I didn't see anything that really made me...
Well, Paulson shall need the provision of the subsection, it's really not anything to discuss unless they had the McDonald's on the schedule.
Unless they said we want to put up a smaller sign than whatever, or bigger. ADA, that's pretty standard stuff, but it's a special condition, just, so why we have those special conditions, just to point out that we need to have that stuff, right?
They're more standard, standardized on every design review we've issued, more kind of precedent, and then compliance with just the applicable Title XVII requirements, kind of just verbatim from the code.
Parking? There's a lot of employee parking down on River Road, and parking plan, is everybody good with the parking plan for employee parking?
Yeah. It's got to meet the code.
Bicycle, bicycle parking spaces, sanitary and sewer, pretty standard, fire marshal approval, we went over that quite a bit, and I don't think we need to add the striping. We all decided as a group we don't need to, because Mike will make sure that's done. Final occupancy is pretty standard, design review plans, changes, any changes, it's just put as a condition so that, you know, nobody can say they didn't know. Financial guarantees, standard stuff. Stormwater, does anybody want to talk about stormwater? It's standard, comply with current Gladstone stormwater treatment and detention. Endangered species act. Are raccoons endangered?
Not that I know of in this state.
They would be, right?
Picking up my lawn.
Display of vehicles that we're going to put in there, just so everybody remembers that vehicles can't be parked on landscaping or in the right-of-ways, ODOT. So anything else anybody wants to look at on this? So we're pretty, my feeling is, let's approve this with the standard and special conditions modified the way that we had discussed. That would be my recommendation.
As far as I understand, that would just be the adding the, I'm not even going to try to say it now.
Including the...
That the swell will be maintained. That's really all there was, correct?
Well, and really to, if I could maybe help, the city-owned property be maintained, because they're already taking care of their own. I understand historically they've been taking care of our part, now they're going to commit to taking care of what we own. Is that clear?
Yeah, and that would be added, that would be added to their calculation for landscaping.
In perpetuity.
And they would have, you know, they'd be way up there with their requirement.
You don't have to go do the maintenance down there.
No, and I'd have to do it in front of my yard now, either.
So does anybody want to make a motion to, about this application?
Sure, I'll make a motion, Commissioner Poole. I make a motion that we approve application file Z-0237-18-D with the conditions that we have added, and I think I've covered everything there, or is that...
And we have. It's actually DR.
Did I say DR?
Would you like me to review?
Well, it's, there's a typo there.
It's designer, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll second it the way I...
It works. I think we got it clear for the record, unless you have any questions?
No.
So Commissioner Poole made a motion, and Commissioner Went seconded. Any other discussion?
One, just one question. I know they got a timeframe to get it done, but do we know about, are we going to, how long we're going to be working? I mean, I know there's no crystal ball. Yeah, good. Well, I know it's money and it's time, and I know you guys are going to do everything you can, but people sometimes will ask, well, what are they doing over there? Or, you know, the clock ticks by, so, good. Well, thank you.
All right.
You must be the operations guy.
Call the roll, please.
Daily.
So we've submitted our motion to approve the design review. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
I approve.
So yes or no?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Went?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rowlett?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing for...
Tonight, good luck to you, fortune.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for file number Z-0271-17-C, request from Verizon for a one-year time extension to replace existing eighty-foot wooden decommissioned wireless communication tower with a new fifty-foot steel tower at the Gladstone High School track, eighteen eighty Portland Avenue. So the hearing is now open. Will staff...
With this one, Chair Rowlett, you actually, this is one of those rare instances where since really all you're doing is making a discretionary decision, anyway, about whether to allow it or not, you're not taking evidence, you're just...
Good.
You don't need to go through the whole script.
That sounds good. So, so someone make a motion?
I make a motion that we give them a year extension.
Motion made by Commissioner Went?
And, oh, yeah. I would, I would, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I probably didn't explain that. I would allow for public testimony if anybody has anything to say, but you don't need to read the entire script.
Okay. So do you want to withdraw your motion?
Oh, withdraw my motion.
All right. Motion withdrawn, public testimony. No public testimony?
I do want to point out one thing, just so everybody's aware. On page four-eight, we did call out specifically that we only allow for one extension. So if they, if they don't get it completed by the end of this extension, I think that's going to require a new application. Is that right?
Correct.
We might want to call that out, since we normally append the extension information whenever we do decisions. That part will have to be different this time through, right?
I think it says we only do it once.
Right, right, but what I mean is, normally we say, you know, if you apply within the next year and get the extension, this time we cannot do that.
I think, yeah, because I think the code says they only are allowed one extension. Yeah.
I'll notify the applicant.
Yeah, the code's pretty clear on that.
Yeah. Anybody want to make a motion?
Go ahead, Libby. I'll make a motion that we accept it.
Commissioner Went made a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Natalie Smith made a motion to accept. All in favor, her seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion passed. All right. We're banging our way through this thing tonight, aren't we? And talk about like what color we should paint our knacks in the kitchen or anything. So now business from the commission, so let's just start like down on the end and work our way down.
I have no business.
Okay.
I can't think of anything. You've been really good about giving status updates regarding what's going on over there with Cars Planet?
Yeah, I'm happy to touch base. So they are working on an application submittal. Last time we talked to them, they have a copy of the design review application. They want to kind of revise and change around where their landscaping is, still meeting the landscaping requirements. I explained to them, we had a pre-application meeting of sorts to go over the code requirements to make sure they fit in that with the new landscaping plan. It's on my to-do list to check in with them again. I last talked with them a few weeks ago, so it's about time to see where they're at with the submittal.
Just made me think of something. The road behind the building there, I've heard, I've heard citizens talking about when there's so many cars on both sides, it makes it be only one lane.
Yeah.
And I think that's something we need to look at.
So that would be a Sean kind of code enforcement issue, that's more kind of a fires, fires safety access type of code enforcement.
East side of the road, it has no parking signs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And they're still parking there, yeah.
Well, no, they're parking behind the...
The building.
The building.
Yeah.
And it's, and there's people that park all the way up to the stop sign, and, you know...
And have turned it into only one lane.
So I do think it'd be good to have the traffic and safety team take a look at it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, the cars that are parked out there, because I used to wholesale autos Sadly, I've done so many different things, probably anything you guys can come up with that thing.
Have you been a surgeon?
Yes, I have. But don't tell me.
Operator.
It wasn't legally.
Oh, okay.
On myself, only, too. Anyway, yeah, when they take trade-ins and stuff, they've parked those cars there, and then the wholesalers come by and buy them. Now, on the other side of the road, you said that was no parking?
With the residential side, I'm pretty sure there's no parking.
Okay. Because there's that one house there with parking...
Yeah, yeah.
That is off-street, so they couldn't park there, for sure. Because there'd be, that's like a egress kind of thing.
Well, Tammy, could you, could you put that on for traffic safety to, to look at it and see about if we should recommend signage if it's not there, or just address the whole issue?
I think definitely at the stop sign, it needs to be addressed, because you're basically, can't see around.
Yeah, it impairs your vision.
Yeah, it impairs your vision, and then you end up stopping in the middle of the road to make your return.
I don't know how they would be able to park on the other side of the road there, though, because there, it's all parking lot.
I've been down there a couple of times where it was like, this has become a one-way street, yeah.
All right. Well, then they're illegally parking, for sure.
Yeah, I haven't noticed any signs that say no parking, but, yeah.
I didn't even look for that.
If that's occurring, then we get back to the safety issue, because then we're going to have, you know, Murphy's Law, or, you know, strange coincidence where that's where the fire truck needs to go, and it can't get through there.
Yeah.
It'd be the new River Road.
It's scary, too, especially when the car is right there, and you pull up and there's foot traffic, you can't see them, like you literally, whoa, there you are, you know. I've dealt with it many times.
I think everyone needs to, I'm serious, every person in this town needs to get in a fire truck and ride with them, and take a little drive around some of the, just take a little drive through the neighborhood. I'm sure Mike Funk would like that, but...
They don't navigate so well.
When you're doing planning and when you're thinking, you know, you've got a standard, and then there's the real world out there, because, oh, well, we've got a parking strip, and certainly none of those cars over there are parked a foot and a half or two feet out from the curb, out which now the fire truck has this much room instead of this much room. So we could talk all night about that, but I think we're probably going to wrap up.
We'd probably have to do a sleepover if we're going to do the fire department right along. Well, they don't just roll down the road all the time like the cops do.
But that would be traffic safety. And one other thing, we will, when they come up with the, I think I read that it will have to come before us again to make sure that they're not, that we're okay with what they've decided.
It would be a whole new design review application. We would have a staffer similar to today.
Yeah, because I don't want to see that they're putting the trees in the back and not filling them back in where they took them out, the bushes.
No, we would be looking at it very closely.
Looks like they're making some efforts there right now on their parking and stuff, the way they're parking the vehicles, and that's why I think a lot of people are frustrated with Auto Town, is because, you know, I mean, all the dealerships, as I drive down there, nobody's doing what their Auto Town's doing, and Car Planets is at least making an effort, even though their landscaping is out of compliance. They've moved their cars so they're not...
Right on the landscape.
I'm sure that the other one will do that now, but it was brought to their attention.
Well, and they're in a very unique place, because they're on Gloucester, so they're on the side street.
They've owned it for eight years. They've known for a long time. That's why you were irritated, right?
Well, I mean, for me, it was just asking for a permit when you're not complying with the one we granted a year ago.
I looked it all up as much as I could tonight, and there's nothing that says that we can discriminate against them or have bias because they're not, that's why I brought it up, so.
You're not complying.
Yeah, but I think, you know, and if you, you know, I think you did the right thing by stepping down, and if we would have voted no on that, and if you would have sat, then that would have been one of the things that they would have brought up, that the lawyers would get rich off of.
Lawyers.
That's why I suggested you sit down.
And we like lawyers. They have their place.
We love attorneys.
Yes, of course. So do you have anything, Mel?
No, I'm being serious.
Yeah, so the first community planning organization meeting is going to be this Friday, which you already knew, but just so everybody knows, that's slowly moving forward. The first meeting is this Friday, the second meeting is going to be next month. We'll see how that goes.
Good. Thank you for being our representative.
And my, here's my stuff, Les, that you don't respond to, you agree to be on that committee for the community, what's it called?
Community Planning Organization.
Community Planning Organization, you agree to be on there, but nobody can get a hold of you, and all the emails that they sent you, you don't respond to.
Well, my apologies.
So they asked me to ask you.
I got an email, actually, if I could interject, I got an email today that I responded to, because there's been a whole lot of uncertainty, a lot going on, and I know we all have our issues, but coincidentally, I got one today that I responded to.
Okay, so... Okay, so.
So, I'll be happy to, things are cleared up, and I'll be there Friday.
All right. So, yeah, I was gonna ask you, if you didn't want to do it, then, and then, um, email. My notes here say use it, and we need to have our new email addresses added to the webpage. They're not on there yet.
I need to go and activate.
And everybody, every one of us, from now on, when anything comes from the city, is gonna go to your city email address, and if you don't read it, then you're not doing your jobs as commissioners.
Is it set up? Yeah, I mean, I don't even know what.
Yes, it's all, well.
We got an email.
Was that an email about it? To where? The city email?
Or what, you might want to read?
No, to your personal, your email that you put on that.
He's trying to talk.
Sorry.
I was just saying, we had emailed that to your personal email with the new, the instructions as to how to set up, but I will resend that out to all the commissioners.
And if you have any questions about it, or you don't get the email, just give Tammy a call, and she'll help you, or somebody will help you.
We'll have our IT person help you.
Well, then, who's the IT?
He was, he was great. He helped me. And mine was, uh, a password issue. He said, well, you can't do, do that. I had something repetitive in there.
Oh, okay.
He said, you can't do that, and that's why it won't allow you to set it up. So, he walked me through how to do it, and it was done. Quite easy.
Well, can, can, well, there, can there be a text message to tell us to go look at it? I mean, it's not gonna be something I'm going to look at every day.
No, it's something that you have to look at.
Okay. Well, I think that, I think that, um, I think that's burdensome. I think we should get a text message, or a note to our regular email to check the other ones. We are not employed, we're not full-time. I'm just, I'm just giving my opinion. Y'all can say whatever you want.
Well, we're not gonna do it.
I'm just saying.
So, Libby, um, I actually had suggested that we get these, the, two years ago. And the reason was because of the laws we have regarding, uh, email retention.
Open media.
And, um, what happens if you're using your personal email for city business, is that your entire email account is basically part of that. And so, we've, we've been asking for all of us to be able to separate our personal from our, our city stuff for years.
And just send that.
And so, they're, they're doing that now, so that we can keep that separate.
Okay.
That, that's why it's happening.
Okay. Strictly for business.
And, you know, I don't know about everybody else, and I don't expect everybody to be like me, I have probably six or seven email addresses I use regularly. I work for the county, I work for the sheriff, and I have email there, two accounts, a Google and the county one, both, that I use regularly. And then, for my personal businesses, I have two or three that I use regularly. Les, how many do you have?
I've got about four, I think.
Anyway, the city email is very important, because the public expects us as public officials, and I want to remind everybody that we are all public officials, and we're treated the same whether we're paid or not. And part of our job is to read our email, and it needs to be the city email that we read, not our personal email accounts. And we're all treated under the law the same, whether we're the city administrator or volunteers, we're public officials in the eye of the state, every one of us. Right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you don't, I mean, from a, certainly from a public records point of view, yeah.
Okay, well, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I, I don't check my email all the time. I get text messages now.
Then if you don't get the email that you need to get.
Just, I will make an effort, Natalie, call me when there's something.
That's, really, whatever we have worked.
I'll send you a text.
Yeah, thank you.
Every one of us is equally responsible to do our own thing, and we're not gonna rely on people unless you make a personal.
Okay, uh, you can get off your mailbox.
The city-paid staff is not going to e, text you and tell you that you're getting an email.
Um, it's pretty, it's pretty.
You're welcome.
It's pretty easy to add a, uh, um, a profile to, like, any, like, mail setup you have. For instance, we use Outlook at work, and I can add that, my city email as a profile on my, on my Outlook, so it's, it's just, it's just bare, and.
I don't know if it'll work on this one, because it's on a domain that's, you know.
Well, what I'm, it's, uh, I guess, I don't know the correct terminology, but.
You're talking about the server, Exchange Server.
Yeah, I'm just talking about Microsoft.
Sometimes you can set up several email accounts on one, so that you get stuff going. But on this one, I think it's locked down pretty, pretty well, so I don't think you'd be able to do that.
Outlook let me do it, so I have.
All right.
I have, you know, multiple profiles. And then, uh, and I imagine that, you know, I have an iPhone, I imagine if I put it in the message, added the profile in the message, it probably would be there too.
Would you mind asking him to help you, if you need help?
That's pretty good.
If I could have your phone, your phone number, we'll exchange numbers afterwards. We could pass a note right now.
We can also have you talk with our IT person, if you have questions.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Phil Robert?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, Les.
Oh, just, just a subject I brought up last month, and it gets scarier every minute. Towing. Um, I'm gonna send some information to the council and just to the city staff with concerns, and now we're looking at a possibility of tolling I-5 in an area where they're gonna do, do the construction, which is where 84 meets I-5. So, we're gonna toll that, we're gonna do a massive construction project on that, and where are those cars gonna go? To 205. So, they might want to toll the Abernathy Bridge here at the freeway. This is gonna be a disaster. I mean, I'm deeply concerned. This is, the way they're going about this is really convoluted, and it is gonna dramatically affect our community. And I said it last month, we can throw away our transportation plan if that comes. All that work will go out the window. We think 99 and Arlington's bad now. It's going to be just a ridiculous mess, so, um, I've got real deep concerns about it. So, let's all pay close attention to that, and hopefully the city will have some, um, discussions about it and how it may affect our community. Thanks.
Just to let you know that it did come up at the last city council meeting, so it is on their radar.
Oh, good, thank you.
Is it gonna helicopters for everybody?
I mean, me personally, right now, whenever I'm driving, like, to Fred Meyer or something, I never jump on the freeway. I just take a second, because there's already too much traffic. The other day, I saw traffic backed up from Fred Meyer's all the way to our exit, uh, onto 205, like, that entire way was flat backed up. And that's before all of this starts, so.
I could tell you a million stories about it. If I'm not going to, it'd make me cry to think about that, so, go ahead.
I have nothing.
I'd just chime in with, uh, Les on the traffic issue. I don't know what kind of influence the city has, or the county for that matter, but, uh, and I would admit that I'm not fully versed on all the issues, but it seems to me that tolling makes no sense at all. You'll have an entire new bureaucracy, you'll have the expense of, of scanning devices, it'll go on windows for regular travelers, you'll have to put in toll booths for people who are from out of state. If they would just raise the gas tax to whatever it takes to pay the bills, everything's already in place. Uh, there, there's no new overhead, uh, no new bureau to set up to manage, uh, it, it's already, already there. And I know that I have a little peek under the tent with some people involved in it, and, and there is an active plan, uh, to try to force people out of cars and to other methods of transportation, which I have no objection to. But they use tolling as a weapon to get that done. And, uh, I think that's not, I don't think it's in the state's best interest to do it, all the way down to counties and local communities. And, you know, you mentioned a couple of streets. Last two times I've come down here at 5 o'clock at night, Oatfield Road is now impassable. It was backed up from the freeway on-ramp past Webster Road, uh, coming down, and I ended up, you know, going around and down Climb Echo to get here. And that's new, and I, I realize right now we have the revival meeting going on at the campground and.
What are the re, what's the reasoning that's being given to want to facilitate tolling?
They want to rebuild the Abernathy Bridge. They want to yank that out and put a bigger bridge in, because when they made that, they didn't make it wide enough. And so, they think the only way to do that is.
It's a bigger issue than that. That's clearly part of it.
Yeah, it goes all the way up past Stafford.
How this started, real quick, and I know we've been here a long time, but I think it's important. Um, they had the transportation bill. That bill had all kinds of projects, including the possibility of fixing 205 and addressing the bridge. And by the time they got done in 2017, uh, I knew I was talking to the wind, because I knew that in the end, the project that would get dropped would be addressing 205. Well, ODOT and the legislature agreed that we, we'd look at ways of financing that and possibly studying tolling as a way to do that. But by the time the bill came out the back door of the legislature, uh, here it is, well, we're gonna study tolling, but we, we don't know about putting any lanes on anything. So, the recommendation became, how are we gonna instill some tolling here, tolling, not, hey, let's toll and let's build something. That's a completely different thing. If you're building something and you're tolling, the public is okay with that, but that is not what's going on here. And the money is going into a giant hole. And again, I am really troubled, so I'll, I'll let your ears go.
Well, I go, okay, now I gotta throw something out. I just was in Florida last month, and they don't have toll booths. You have to have the sun pass, and if you don't, you're a traveler, they capture your license and then they send your bill.
California did that to me.
And that's, so there's not gonna be toll, toll gates. Just, I gotta say that, because everyone says it's gonna be called toll gates. And I don't think that'll happen. It will go into a black hole, just like the gas tax will, and I'll, but, I just wanted to say no toll gates. Not that I approve of it, but.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's just it. If they would use the monies, the taxes that are collected for the roads and improvements, and use it for that, they wouldn't need to keep adding up more fees.
All right.
Call me crazy, but what are the, what are the chances that you're from Pennsylvania, and you pass through here once, and you get a bill, 'cause you were on the freeway?
It happened.
What are the chances you're gonna pay that?
I was in California during spring break, and I just gotta.
Let them come get you.
Get in the mail, like, huh?
Well, they can put it against your license.
Getting better at it.
Well, I know in Washington State, on the, uh, on the Narrows, Combe and Narrows Bridges, there are toll booths on both ends of it for people that don't have the pass.
But, but they're talking about passes, and I'm saying it can be done without putting toll booths up. They do it in Florida all over. And, and it, they have agreements with the other states, so that you can lose your license if you don't pay your bills. So, that's, that's what the, uh.
I still think tolling is an inefficient way to raise money. It makes no sense to me.
I think the tax is bad, too, because I don't use that bridge, but I drive a lot, so I'm gonna have to pay gas tax.
But there's road maintenance everywhere in the state, everywhere.
Right, which is a black hole.
And even though we may not drive on a road, we benefit from the transit, go to Fred Meyer to buy stuff. They ship the truck across that bridge to bring the stuff to the store.
I think we're off council.
Yes, we are.
I think we're off.
Do you adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Why do you adjourn? What happened to this, uh, the old 268-18-E thing that I got a notice on that you guys are gonna discuss tonight?
What was that?
Um, it was withdrawn. They withdrew the application, um, because we were gonna be recommending denial. It was a, um, existing garage built in, I think, 1915, um, that was not a non-conforming, legally non-conforming structure. It was actually compliant with the required setbacks, so they were applying to expand or alter a legally non-conforming garage and turn it into an accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, wow.
Um, we could not recommend approval pursuant to the non-conforming use-alteration-expansion section of the code, because it wasn't a non-conforming structure. So, we, uh, identified that to the applicant, the property owner. She can move it, um, so that it's compliant with the accessory dwelling unit setbacks, or she can construct a new structure that's an accessory dwelling unit on the property. She has the room.
So, when, when, when did she withdraw? I'm telling you, but why didn't I even know? Another thing, it's a public account.
Oh, that's just to, to notify, that's the only code requirement, that we notify you when there's a, a decision.
I found it to be very interesting, however, I kept waiting for this to be.
So, sorry about that.
Sorry about that. At the beginning of the meeting, I read what, what we were going to discuss, so.
But it's better not to come before 6:30, because you probably wouldn't hear it, hear it until after 6:30.
Yeah, and then, just so you know in the future, that I'll read what our agenda is, and, and which public hearings we're going to have. So, we apologize for that, but we're glad you stayed and watched the meeting. So, if you have any comments or anything, uh, just let us know, because.
I was kind of confused as to where this, uh, whole place was led until, I mean, you gave me an address, I wasn't sure just where I was.
It's immediately south of.
Did it be the Buick GNC or?
Yeah, still is.
Still is. They're going through a major remodel and adding a building.
Yeah, the corner of Gloucester and, um, Gloucester.